All right, I'd like to ask for adoption of the agenda, a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. Okay Sean, and second, Dorothy, great, thank you. We call the meeting to order. First, I would like to acknowledge that we're meeting on the ancestral lands of the Coast Salish people. Also, I would like to welcome Sean Eden back to our commission. Thank you Sean for joining us, and thank you everybody for being here so that we have an official quorum tonight. My name is Colleen Brownlee, I'm vice chair of the commission, and this evening we have two items on our agenda. I'd like to thank people who are coming out to take time to come out tonight. Our advisory committee, commission, is not a decision-making group. We do provide advice and we will make a recommendation to council. And as we go through this evening, we will have a particular format that we follow. Initially, when we get to the items on business here, we will have the staff, the planners, to present the reports for each item before us. We will then have the applicant, should the applicant choose to make a presentation regarding their application. Citizens in attendance have the opportunity also to speak regarding the application as presented before everyone today. We would ask that when people do that, that they state their name, their address, and present their information. Those of us who are in the audience listening, we ask that you respect everybody's points of view. Some are maybe differing, and regardless, everybody has the right to say what they say, and we hold everybody's comments with high regard and certainly in a respectful manner. I would now ask for adoption, oh, I won't ask for adoption of the minutes, because we do not have a minutes available for their last meeting. There is no old business, so we will move right along to new business. We have our first report, which is a development variance permit application, DVP 18-007, 370 Littoria Boulevard and Dunlin Street. And Mr. Buckham, would you like to present, please?
Thank you. Gablecraft Homes, represented here tonight by their manager marketing, is requesting a variance to allow for relaxation of Callwood's sign by law. The purpose of this request is to allow for three oversized temporary development signs on two lots associated with the Royal Bay development, shown in appendix one and two. The sign by law currently allows for either two development signs, 1.5 meters squared per parcel, or one three meter squared sign per parcel. The request for the property on Littoria is to change it from three meters squared to 18.5 meters squared for one sign. And for on Dunlin, it's to change from two 1.5 meters squared to two 9.25 meters squared signs. Staff do not have objections to the proposed temporary project marketing signage on the basis that the design and locations are not anticipated to obstruct vehicle or pedestrian traffic.
Good evening Vice Chair Brownlee and commission members. My name is Courtney Fraser, manager of marketing for Gablecraft Homes, 300 Littoria Boulevard. As Richard said, we are applying for three oversized temporary signs on our two properties, 370 Littoria and just east of Dunlin Street. With the change in the local market from a seller's market to a balanced market, it's very important for us to have visible onsite signage for the success of our business. We need it to inform traffic of what we are selling, what prices we are starting from, and where to go for more information. We pay a lot of money in marketing to drive people to our site, and have been finding that the current temporary signage sign of three meters squared is a pedestrian scaled sign, not meant for vehicle traffic, and is being dwarfed by the buildings of two and three stories that we are trying to sell. We've worked with the city of Callwood to make sure the location of the proposed signs does not block any traffic sightlines, and have cross-referenced with third-party sources to make sure that the content on our signs is appropriately scaled for moving traffic. Thank you.
So through the chair to our planning rep. This report makes it clear that the sign by law, known as number 60, was adopted in 1988. It then goes on to talk about how the land use by law is in the process of being updated. It implies that there won't be an update to the by law number 60, or there won't be an initiative to replace that by law. Rather, the land use by law will capture and reflect the new and improved intentions with respect to signage within, as reflected within the OCP. Is that the direction that this is going?
That is my understanding through the long-range planning departments.
Okay. And one other related question. This appendix, which is very helpful, contrasts and compares the by law requirements vis-à-vis signage for Callwood as to other jurisdictions within South Vancouver Island. And what's being proposed is frankly considerably larger than other signs in other jurisdictions. So does planning have a comment on that? I'm not talking to the intent or the need for signage now, I'm talking about the scale of what's proposed.
The purpose of that was simply to show a comparison for the committee. We don't have a comment on that specifically.
Okay. All right, those are my comments for now, thanks.
Through the chair, I also have a question for the planning representative. I am speculating that the five years for the second sign for Royal Bay North is to reflect the later stage of that phase, is that correct? It's on page four of your report.
Thank you. So that was provided by Gablecraft as when they are expecting that phase to be sold off. So the intent there was to show that these signs would be either removed when sales complete or at that five-year mark.
Okay, so I guess the question is, would that sign be constructed two years from now? And then removed when sales finish?
So the plan and the recommendations in the report is to have it potentially built after council, right after they approve it? Or not? And then it could stand until March 2024?
Okay, thanks.
I'm not sure about highway signs, but I do know that if you're 140 feet back, a 14-inch letter is what is required for easy readability. And so the largest letter on ours, like for now open or now selling, is 14 inches. I'm not sure what the actual highway sign is, because it's a different speed. I would want to go and actually measure it, but from the two graphic firms that we work with, both of them have said that that would be for the distance of where our signs are off of Littoria Boulevard, what they would propose for easy readability and therefore traffic safety of moving vehicles. Definitely not on the Dunlin Street ones, there's no signs there. I guess the closest thing would be a crosswalk, which is after Dunlin Street on Littoria Boulevard. And the corner where we have moved this West Commons sign to, there's nothing there.
So these signs are proposed to be located on private property, not the Boulevard where the road signs would be located? So there's not a concern from that end, because those would be behind the road signs.
I guess my concern here is that, you know, if you've got a traffic sign, and then you've got a big sign, even if it's on private property, if there's only a sidewalk difference beside them, someone might be driving in an area that's unfamiliar to them, see a big sign that's calling their attention. I mean, it says right in here, that's the point of these signs, is to draw your attention. And the person not see the speed limit, which is also, I believe, wrongly referred to in the letter here. We're talking about in our little justification there, we've got reference to 45 miles per hour, 60 kilometers an hour. I think we're talking about a 50 kilometer an hour speed zone in here, right?
Yes, Littoria Boulevard is 50 kilometers, and I would say on average cars go between 50 to 60.
Right, well, we certainly don't want to condone speeding, so we certainly would like to, you know, if we're going to do a speed appropriate sign, it seems like we should stick to the legal speed limit on that. So going back to my point, it feels like if we've got a really big sign that's located close to a traffic sign, we could be underwhelming the message that the traffic sign is going to make. And that's why I was just wondering, is that a criteria?
So if you go to appendix one and appendix two, you'll see that the signs are set back from the road and the boulevard. For Littoria Road, it's behind the Boulevard bike lane sidewalk and the islands. And from the property line, it's about 0.3 meters into the property. And on appendix two for Dunlin Street, you'll see that it's 15 meters back from Littoria Boulevard, and about 2.4 back from Dunlin Street.
And then when that street punch is through here on appendix two, we were anticipating that there wouldn't be a sign placed on that corner there that could... Because these signs, I mean, they're referred to as temporary, but they're going to be here for quite a while, as brought to attention by my colleague. I think we have to anticipate where signage is going to go on this road.
Which would be on the sidewalks, boulevards, that area, and it wouldn't be on private property.
Obviously, yeah, no, I'm not sure if my point is getting missed, sometimes I'm accused of that. But it seems like if I put my, let's say, if we look at appendix two here, and on the corner where the signs are going to go, and you can see that little bit of green space there on the northern side of the picture. If I put my stop sign, or whatever is going to be there for a pedestrian walk or something like that, or if I put my little speed limit sign, or whatever sign might go in there, is it going to be overwhelmed by the fact that I've got this attention drawing sign, not in front of it, but right in the general vicinity of it? And that's what I'm asking, is that a consideration? Do you guys think about, even though it's private property, do you think about sort of a radius perception of these? Or is it just sightlines that you focus on?
So I got it now, thank you. It is just the sightlines that we're focusing on.
Okay, all right. And just a couple of other questions here, just briefly. If you can just, through the chair to the applicant, can you just confirm you do currently have a three meter squared sign in place?
Yes, we actually have four.
Okay.
Scattered throughout Royal Bay Development.
Okay, okay. And how many units are proposed for the V-shaped sign development?
Sixty-three.
Sixty-three. And how many units would be proposed for the second development with two signs?
Just over 70, 73, I believe.
Okay, so I'm asking that just in reference to what I found helpful in looking at the appendix five, and I agree it's a very helpful appendix. In reference to the number of units, it seems to me like that's maybe a decent scale of looking at things. So if we look at that, then in a Nanaimo context, 63 units would allow you a larger sign, right? And likewise, for the other development, the 63 units would allow you a larger sign in that context. So I was just looking through at that. I think that's all I have for now, manager.
May I refer back to your previous question? Just to clarify, this Dunlin Road is actually already constructed, and there is just one stop sign that's at the corner right here. But this is already built out at this time.
And where, sorry, where's the stop sign?
It's at the, just sort of like right beside where that green sign is.
Yeah, okay.
So it would be for traffic, that would be, the signs would be behind them. Coming up to the stop, for the stop sign.
So the sign, just for clarification, is across the street, the stop sign is across the street from where the proposed signage?
Yeah, and they would be moving in the opposite direction of being able to read it.
Dorothy?
I'm concerned with the sign, that there's a lot going on there. I go, I walk the beach there, often I come up the beach, there's a whole lot going on there. There's the big trucks, there's the people driving, there's road bikes, there's kids walking the road from school, there's bicyclists, there's tourists, there's a lot going on. And I have a concern about a lot of distractions, actually, because it seems hard enough, as it is, to take in everything. You've got people coming up from that Royal Bay beach, you've got people entering into it, you've got people wiping down Littoria coming out, just a lot of activity. And when you think about being there for five years, and the volume of traffic is going to increase, filters, they're building onto Royal Bay School now, so that means more trucks, more construction. That's my concern, is that there'd be a lot of distraction there.
Am I allowed to comment?
Yes.
Yeah, I think what we are seeing right now is we have like the three meter squared sign, say up on the West Commons property right now in the corner. And in order, when people are driving, I mean, there is a sign there, and you can see that there's a sign there, but then what's happening is either they're slowing to read it, or they pull over to read it. And so when you're talking about like the distraction, I think it's easier, and from what I've been reading and understanding is it's actually just safer for someone to be able to grasp the message within three seconds and continue to drive, rather than try to slow down or squint to see it or not be able to absorb it quickly.
There's just other marketing methods that can be utilized. Social media is also for selling. You don't necessarily have that little school sign that's like a billboard in a community. Just my observation.
We do do those methods of marketing as well. So we try and have all methods of our marketing as strong as possible.
I have a couple of questions, one to the planner. In reference to the signage, and the one in particular that is temporary for five years, is that something that has been past practice with other developments, where there's been signage approved, and it's the temporary limitation, is a five-year limitation? Or is this specific to this particular development?
So the past practice has been for those signs to be temporary, and that is not quite defined in the by law, so that could theoretically be a temporary sign that lasts for years. The intention here was to set an expectation for when that was going to wrap up, so it could be an either or. That way the signs don't last for over five years.
So if it does not sell out within five years, obviously the sign would be there for five years. My question, my second part of the question comes back, is these signs are unlit. However, do they have any night reflection on them? As far as like some street signs without lights, they have a reflector on them? Or is there any kind of reflection paint or tape on these signs where it is going to stand out in the dark hours?
I was not planning on putting reflective. We have, we do have reflective on our directional signs in the development, but on the marketing side, I was not planning on doing reflective.
All right. And the second part of the question is, should the sign remain up in a temporary way for five years? What is the longevity of the sign? We have lots of wind and sand and blowing and weather. What will the sign look like two years from now, three years from now?
Yeah, I think for us, if there was ever any issues with the sign with wind or sunlight or anything like that, we would make sure that the quality of them, you know, are refreshed. They are built six-by-six wood posts, they're reinforced with steel. So they've been built very, very strongly to withstand the weight, and then they have counterweights on them as well. Definitely understand wind in Royal Bay has been a marketing issue in the past, so well-prepared for that. But yes, for us, it's our brand, right? We don't want a sign out there looking crappy, so we would be responsible for making sure that it stays beautiful.
And when they are erected, they are erected in a safe manner so that would ensure that there wasn't any vandalism that occur? Or when you have a number, your increased number of population who comes in, and sometimes strange things happen, that you want to be, ensure that there are no, there's no risk to individuals who may decide they want to be Superman or whatever?
Yes. I think that in the end, like we always try and make everything as safe as we possibly can. And we do have actually 24-hour security onsite, so it's actually part of our insurance, to have our insurance claims. So we do have security onsite all the time where these signs be.
Thank you, well, I think we've covered a number of areas here regarding signage. Certainly, the fact that the sign by law goes back to 1988, previous signage that perhaps has been approved by council in the past. And one of the big factors, I think, for everybody too, is the detractors, detractors from road safety. Sometimes you have large signs, but regardless of where the speed limits are placed or the stop signs are, people who are driving sometimes get detracted by certain things, so that certainly would be a concern. My concern and is echoed in different ways throughout the commission who is around the table here. So thank you very much. Any further, sorry?
My question was answered, thank you.
Okay. All right. Any other final comments?
Yeah, thank you very much. So this is a tough one. And I find it challenging, because the Royal Bay project in and of itself is a significant development, and is adding all kinds of economic vitality to this region. And as the expression goes, you can't sell a secret, right? So ordinarily, I'm a big fan on being able to have a sign that adequately tells the story. I'm also very sympathetic to the fact that by virtue of the design that the signs want to be, the orientation cannot be or should not be pedestrian, should be vehicular. And all your points around that requiring that the font size be a certain size makes sense to me. However, I juxtapose those remarks with the size of what's being proposed relative to what other jurisdictions have adopted by way of guidelines. And I'm defaulting to that simply because someone has taken the time to thoroughly research what is an appropriate size sign, given the context of where it's located geographically, the size of the project that is being marketed. And in every case, what's being proposed is a radical departure from these other guidelines. So on that basis alone, I'm kind of hard-pressed to get behind it with the kind of euphoria that I need to get behind with it in order to recommend it. Again, I think, you know, the signs are warranted, but I think the size of the signs and the number are what make it a challenge for me to recommend.
Just, so on the 370 Littoria sign, the one that was, I think it ended up being over 18 meters squared, the reason why that did become so large is because we were proposing one sign that was double-sided, so traffic both ways could view it. And then per the city of Callwood's request, we moved it because of the sightlines. We were originally going to have it at the entrance to the project, so we moved it to the corner. And therefore, it became a V sign, which is where, so you can see it on both, moving both sides. So even though the sign will have the exact same content on both panels, it's really just so that you are attracting, or so the traffic coming one way can read it, and the other traffic coming the other way can read it safely.
Totally get that. But I think what I'm sensing from these by law requirements and the criteria that's been established by these other jurisdictions is a belief that there is such a thing as sign pollution, as there is light pollution. And there can be just too much of it, because this is one project. You have to replicate that across other signage needs by other stakeholders. And then it does become terribly overwhelming when you look at it on that level.
I mean, Royal Bay in itself is one community, but within Royal Bay, we do actually have multiple projects going on. So our West Commons is our multifamily project. I actually have a full, my marketing plan, everything is, that's one area. Whereas in our single-family homes, they're really another project. So although I'm coming in from this application for, you know, under one sort of roof, these are two projects that I am going signs for.
One further question to the planner. What is the size of the largest sign that exists now in the Royal Bay area? Because there are a lot of signs there.
I don't have that information.
Okay.
I have quite a lot of concern, and that's setting the precedent in regards to what you're saying about other jurisdictions. I think it would be incumbent on us to be aware that once this is approved, we would have a harder time just trying to turn down any other applicants for signs this large. And there is a real movement to go off the billboards, onto social media. It's less signage pollution, it's a better way to go. So I'd be afraid of setting the precedent for this in our community.
Any further discussion?
I'm going to weigh in a little bit here. For me, ironically, I don't find the signs all that much out of scale for the size of the development. And if you can picture a piece of plywood, the biggest panel, albeit one of them is V-shaped, is double, it's essentially three pieces of plywood stacked one on top of the other. And that's about the size that's needed for getting a message for a development across. Some of the highway signs, the big billboards that you see are going to be, you know, eight or 10 pieces of plywood all stacked together. So it's smaller than that, but it is still a big sign. It's approaching two stories tall. For me, the issue, and I raised it early with... For me, the issue, and I raised it early with my question on the five years, is, to me, five years is pushing the boundary of the definition of temporary, and that's something that I struggle with a little bit in this application, is there's nothing to say that, well, there's nothing to guarantee that that sign will be maintained, you know, I, I, you know, hope that this development is highly successful and that everything goes well, but we, we don't, we can't guarantee that. So maintenance is an issue, if it's a temporary sign, it's probably going to be constructed with wood, facing wood, it will deteriorate, deteriorate over time. Yes, it can be reproduced and replaced, but again, I just, my feeling is that five years is a really long time. So I, I'm kind of thinking in my mind that I'd be, I'd be willing to, to vote for a motion that, that approved the signs, the size of the signs, but that required the, an amendment to the five-year stipulation. Thanks.
To the staff, to Mr. Carlson perhaps. If this application where there are three options to recommend or to defer, if, if the commission deferred with some caveats on it, such as could the applicant come back with addressing some of the questions that were concerned, that were our concerns, and also the consideration of a less than five-year temporary, is that part of what this committee can, can recommend under the deferral option that I'm giving here? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do, Madam Chair, it's certainly within the commission's purview to ask for that. The recommendation from the advisory planning commission obviously would be forwarded to council, and ultimately it would be up to them if they want to refer it back to staff for more information, but you're certainly entitled to include that.
Okay, thank you. Sean.
Thank you, if I could just make one more comment through the chair, just to buttress my colleagues' points here as well, that in the report, we reference, you know, times that this sort of decision has been made before. One example given is in 2012 for the, shall we call it infamous Caldwell Corners. Another one that might sort of ring a bell would be Silk Wind, I don't know if any of you remember that, or I can't remember, Silk Wind or Silk Wood was it? Those were signs that we got to look at for a long period of time after they remained holes in the ground and unfinished. That's not good for a community, and there's no assurance here, you admit in your letter of support that the market appears to be, you know, we're coming off a hot market, if I can use your words, and that, you know, there appears to be some uncertainty, you know, the courts of law throughout Canada have consistently stated that real estate development is at all times a speculative affair. And so one of the problems we have here is if we commit to a sign of any length, what assurance do we have? And there's nothing within the current wording of the bylaw that protects the municipality from being able to take downs or take down signs, or from asking the developer to take down signs if building stops. And I wonder if planning, or if the applicant would consider some sort of amendment that would tie the existence of the signs to ongoing construction, and stating that if ongoing construction stops, then signs come down. I wonder if that could be something that the applicant would consider. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have three options before us. In regard to the development variance permit, DVP 18-007, the commission may recommend to council that the DVP 18-007 be authorized for issuance, or B, defer the application for further information, or C, recommend to council that the application be denied. I'll ask for a motion from the commission on this.
Well, I'd like to, I like Sean's point about, you know, the, the end of construction, and I think that that's something that possibly, I'm wondering if we can bring that wording into the recommendation, like to add to the, to the recommendation. I also like the idea that, that there is some wording around taking down the sign at the end of five years, or, you know, having some kind of duration on it, you know, and make the responsibility gablecraft as opposed to the city. So if those were added, I would be willing to recommend it to go forward.
So you would recommend that the application be authorized subject to?
Yes.
Right? Do we have a second or?
Sorry, just for clarification, so you're stipulating Sean's criteria, that if the development should stop, the sign comes down?
Mm-hmm.
But what about Paul's criteria?
Which?
That five years in and of itself is too long of a term for a temporary sign.
I actually have to agree with that as well, yeah.
I was gonna respectfully suggest that you stip that as well in your recommended resolution.
I would agree with that as well.
We need to have a second or first of all, before we get into excessive discussion here, folks, so.
Sorry about that.
All right, Paula, can you, let's go back, and if you want to put forward the amendments for consideration?
So the three amendments that I'm suggesting that we add to the recommendation are to lessen the term for the duration that the sign is allowed to be on the site, to, I'm losing my train of thought now, to, if the construction is to complete or stop at any period of time, that we would, that the sign would be removed at that time. And I think the third one I said was that if, at the end of the duration, that it be the responsibility of, of the applicant to take that sign down as opposed to the city, or if the construction stopped again, at the applicant's expense.
Do we have a second or, before we have any further discussion? Your second, okay, Sean will second. All right, further discussion. Mr. Carlson, you had something?
Madam Chair, if I could just point out to, and recommend that there be a clause in here that says the signs be removed if the construction stops, from a staff point of view would be problematic, because what do you define as construction stops? So I just caution about including that in your motion.
Jeff?
Good point, I was gonna raise the same thing, so I think you need to put some bookends on that. If construction ceases for a period longer than blank, and I'm suggesting blank be a month, right? And then as to the term, I think we need to bring some specificity to that as well. Five years doesn't work, so I'm thinking three years does, you know? Just suggestions, food for thought.
Okay, yes?
Looking at it from the other lens as well, it seems to me that, and this was brought up in discussion with the 2024 sign, it seems a little preemptive to be advertising for a project that is going to finish that far down the road unless we're already actively building it, and so perhaps the other way route to go would be to say, you put up a sign, you need to be starting construction within a certain period of time, and then once that construction has ceased or has been abandoned, then you take it down. Has construction already started on that? Okay.
Well, and they've got pre-sales to meet too.
Right, right.
In order to qualify for financing, so.
So.
It's not easy.
All right, we have a recommendation with an amendment, which we're looking to amend the amendment. So first of all, we need to amend the amendment, should everybody so agree. So recommend to council that DVP 18-007 be authorized for issuance, subject to a shorter time duration of signage, to a period of? Two years? Three years? To a period of not more than three years. Okay? Of not more than three years. That's amendment number one, all right? We'll do all the amendments together if that's appropriate. Second, if construction ceases for a period of? One month? Okay, one month or more, the signage shall be removed. Sorry? At the cost of the developer. If construction ceases for a period of one month or more, the signage shall be removed at the cost of the developer. Do that? I, I would interpret this, and Mr. Carlson, and few, and Mr. Bucken can jump in here. For a month, ceases for a period of one month or more, I would assume that all the approvals are going and that the ceasing of work stoppage is not a total work stoppage, it's just in the process of moving along. Do we need to clarify that further? Okay, if the, if construction ceases for a period of one month or longer, for reasons other than normal construction delays, the signage shall be removed at the cost of the developer. Does that cover it? Okay, Sean.
Sorry, thank you, through the chair, I feel like we're starting to try to make policy decisions, it feels like we're trying to rewrite a bylaw, and, and I don't think that's what we're supposed to do. And I think ultimately here, we've got a bylaw in place, the bylaw in place is being sought to be varied. I, I don't feel like I've been shown a significant pressing need on the part of the applicant to vary. I think we've shown that the most recent geographically approximate bylaw review that was done facing this actually mirrors our own current bylaw, so I mean, there's two ways of looking at a 1988 bylaw, is one that it's outdated, another way is to say, it's working great, don't need to fix it. And I think ultimately, I'm starting to back away because of the nature of the debate here, to sort of think, in, in front of us is, is just whether we're gonna accept the bigger signs or not.
We have a motion on the table, we have amendments on the table, so let's vote on the amendments first, all right? All those in favor of the amendment, the amendments as discussed? Contrary? Okay, amendments are no longer amendments. Now, we still have a motion on the floor, recommend to council that the DVP 18-007 be authorized for issuance. All those in favor? Contrary? Motion is denied. Recommendation will be, all right, so that's denied. Now, we have two other options on the floor. Option B, defer the application for further information, or recommend to council that the application be denied. Do we have a second or? Sean, okay. Motion on the floor, moved by York and Eden, that the, that the APC recommend to council that the application be denied. Any discussion? All those in favor? Contrary? Uh, let's go, yeah, three and three. So it should. Yes. Is it four and two? Okay. Okay, the motion is to recommend to council that the application be denied, moved by Eden and York. Moved, Sean seconded, no, excuse me, moved by Dorothy, seconded by Sean. All right, those in favor? Four, okay, and those against, two, okay. All right, motion is recommendation to council will be that the application be denied. Do we have some? I know this has been part of our discussion in the past, do we have some comments or recommendations that we could make to the planners to take forward? That's what you would like from us, correct? Because you've asked us, and in the past. Jeff?
Through the chair, great question, that's really the purpose of this APC.
Yes.
Is to provide solid constructive feedback to council. So I go back to the point that I made earlier, which is, I found Appendix 5 very compelling because it does summarize the signage guidelines adopted by their jurisdictions, and so I again defaulted to rely on those and the integrity of those because someone made it their business to really research what appropriately sized signs are, and so I think I would ask that when the land use bylaw is being rewritten, that there be due consideration to including sufficient language within the land use bylaw that addresses in a more contemporary way what the signage needs are of this community, and in the process of making that evaluation, refer to this very appendix.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments to the planners, yes?
Yeah, I think I came right out and said I didn't have an issue with the scale of the signs, and I still don't, but, but again, I, you know, the issue of, of the timing to me seems to be a discretion on the part of staff when, when the, I guess, requirements are laid out, and to my understanding, that, you know, that five year is, that five year is really just part of the decision-making process, the right, the drafting of this. So again, for me, I just felt like that was just too long, and, and, you know, if it had been three years, I, it just seems more reasonable to me, and I have visions of pieces of plywood hanging off and waving in the wind and peeling, peeling signage and that sort of thing, and I'm not saying, I'm not suggesting that, that this applicant is necessarily going to let that happen, but, but to me, five years just, just seems out of the realm of temporary and what this policy was intended to, to do, so, so that's why I voted against it, so, thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments or helpful information for the planners? Paula?
I think it was really relevant that Sean brought up the placement of the traffic signs and that, and I think that that would be very valuable to locate where existing traffic signs are along the roadside, to know that if it is, whether it would be a distraction in competition with these signs as well, I think that was very valid. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, once again, we, we are not a decision-making body, we make a recommendation to council, and council will deal with the information accordingly, that has been discussed this evening, and we thank you for your input and wish you well. Thank you. All right. Item 5.2 on the agenda is Development Variance Permit Application, DVP 18-0113140 Flanagan Place. Richard?
Thank you. The owner, Amayak Sogomoyen, forgot that? Awesome. Is requesting relaxation to section 2.105 of the Callwood Land Use Bylaw. The purpose of this request is to allow for an addition to an existing house. The addition is garage. And the setback is changing from 30 meters from the natural boundary of Callwood Creek to 17.12 meters from the natural boundary of Callwood Creek. Things of note, the existing building is approximately 15 meters back from the natural boundary of the creek. QEP, Qualified Environmental Professional, has established that the streamside protection area is 10 meters, not 30 in this case. And since the proposed setbacks meet the applicable design guidelines and objectives in section 20 of Callwood's official community plan, staff are recommending that the variance be approved.
Okay, thank you. Would you like to come forward? Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Amayak Sogomoyen. So, that property we bought already 14 years ago. And, you know, in the beginning, it was presented to me by Realtor as subdivisible because it sits on half acre. And, you know, back then, this riparian areas were not in, in, uh, well, anyway, I wasn't aware of that such a, such a, you know, it was newer bylaw anyway comparing to back then. And so, we kind of, we said, well, you know, back, our kids are growing and then we're gonna be having, you know, one, one day, we're gonna build house, another house on, on the same property. And the only issue was back then, like, say, why it wasn't subdividable? Because the, that Flanagan doesn't have sewer. And if sewer will come, then septic, the need of septic field was not needed anymore. And then the space is freed up and then, you know, another house can be built. But then, then lately, you know, new bylaws of riparian areas got basically, and then sewer, sewer really looks like it's never gonna come to, to Flanagan because it's like very well perking area, you know, that sits on the gravel pit. So, no, like I was learned, I learned lately that snow emergency there kind of for, for years to come. So, then we basically decided, you know, like, look at other options. And then, in the meantime, my, my kids grew up and then my daughter got married. And so, we, like, basically, they built their house like about four years ago for themselves. My, my son and my daughter, they got together, you know, financially, they couldn't afford each. But together, they, they built another house. And it became like too big of a house for us, me and my wife. And we kind of start looking at options and then we rented a house and then we actually went even to Kelowna. Well, my, my wife had some health issues, like, we thought it's weather-related. And then we stayed a little bit in Kelowna, but find out lately was, you know, dealing with doctors and all this. We find out that's basically not weather-related. Her problem is like apparently intolerance to milk. So, once she lately cut it on the milk, so she, she now can walk better. Yeah, it's kind of, you, you learn new something every day. So, we came back and then my daughter got married and then now she, they expecting baby. And then they, well, you know, they cannot stay with my brother anymore. And they, they, they will be selling the house. And then my daughter with her husband, well, will find her, their own place. And then us, me and my wife and my son, we are retiring in Flanagan. And my son is stonemason, so he's basically, we have a garage already on property, you can see probably. But as a stonemason, he needs the whole even much more space than, than, you know, because he has like wet side and scaffolding, you know, cement, you know, a lot of equipment. And so, for us to, to be able to, well, we, we kind of decided to retire here in, in, you know, in this house. And so, that's why we need that, we come up with, we needed to build a garage. And then, well, once we approached the city and then we learned that there is like new bylaw, which is that riparian area. So, then we went through all this, you know, biologist, et cetera. And then after consulting with them, they said, well, it's still feasible based on, you know, basically, right now, there is a gravel pit there, we're, we're building on gravel. And we, we're not gonna be distort, like, we're not gonna need to cut any tree or anything like that.
Thank you. To the commission, unless, is there anybody else who wishes to speak? To the commission. Member of the commission, any comments, questions, clarification?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through the chair to planning. Is there no section 219 covenant on these properties with regard to this riparian setback? Is it all just governed by bylaw?
So, it is governed by bylaw in the Fish Protection Act. As part of the development proposal, they'd have to get a environmental development permit. Before staff can sign off on that, they would need to demonstrate the sighting as possible, which is why we're at the variant stage.
But there's, for purchaser of these properties, unless they actually look at bylaw, there's nothing on title that shows, okay, there's this.
Correct.
Then again, through the chair to staff, on your recommended resolution here or recommendation, you reference, you know, substantial compliance with the site plan and sample elevation drawings. Now, in your opinion, does, I, I would prefer specific reference also included to the biologist's report. Does that include that?
That, that will be covered as part of the development permit. That'll establish requirements for environmental monitoring, for the QEP to be on site during laydown, restoration works, things like that. This is specific to the sighting and there's the, even though the QEP has been on site and has said that spia is 10 meters as opposed to the 30, since the bylaw specifies a 30-meter setback, that's what's being requested to be varied right now.
Okay. And then just to reiterate, and I know you already made this point, but the house already exists within this 30-meter setback. The addition that's going to be attached to the house is actually further away from that 30-meter setback than a good portion of the existing property.
That is correct.
Okay, I think that's all I had. Thank you.
Jeff?
Thank you. Through the chair to the planner. If you turn to page one, about four paragraphs down where it reads section 20.1J, I think there's the word F missing after setbacks and before applicant because what this is intending to say, I think, is that a narrower riparian setback would be supported by staff if indeed the applicant can demonstrate significant net ecological benefits. Is that correct?
That is correct.
I think we're missing the word if there.
And the.
The applicant's can demonstrate that.
And the biologist's report speaks to that significant benefit.
Right. So, that kind of leads to the question. And correct me if I'm wrong, but aside from the remark that Commissioner Sean made, which is that the house as it sits now is within that 30-meter setback, the whole premise upon which the planning department is approving this or proposing the recommendation of this variance is predicated on there being net ecological benefits.
Correct.
Because those have to be proven in order for this to have any merit. So, can the applicant explain to me what the net ecological benefits are? Because I'm not an ecologist and I don't understand the ticks and the boxes that are listed in the ecological report. But if either you or the planning department could describe, I think it would be very edifying for the commission to know what the trade-offs are here.
Yeah, well, basically during the process, I learned myself too, like, something new to me after meeting with biologist and also met with Harti Alteris. The boss came on site, you know, biologist did his own report and also gave me recommendations. And then, well, basically, we, we, we have a plan now after garage is built. How we're gonna, basically, it's kind of re- landscaping. So, apparently, I have few invasive species on, you know, on the property, which I didn't even know. One is poison ivy, English ivy, holy tree. Apparently, it's not very good for, you know, being that close to creek. And then, well, it was there like when I bought the property, I never knew. So, anyway, we're gonna remove those. Like, and then there is like some other bushes, which are very, basically horticultural. She said like when it's, when the spring comes, like when it's, don't touch it yourself. Let me come and do the work. Because I'm gonna hire her to remove and then replant with a number of other plants which are beneficial for creek. And then they kind of, well, they will, once we plant those spaces, it will invite wildlife, like some birds will come back and then that's what benefits out to creek. And then apparently, some plants, if they present, I don't know how it happens in, in nature, but fish, I don't know, smells them and comes. But it looks like there is plants which you, if you plant, certain species of like plants, if you plant them by the water, then the fish comes to creek. So, that's what I learned. And then basically, we kind of have a whole list of, and they're all edible as well, edible. And actually, she also taught me that, like, when I mentioned wanting to retire, one of my favorite activities when retired, I liked gardening. So, I kind of thought like, well, you know, that's not gonna be very much possible. And I was surprisingly glad to learn that, like, actually gardening is beneficial. And even invited, it even like, you know, yeah, it's kind of good to have edible gardening happening there and it's gonna be good for creek as well. So, that's, and then we kind of then, based on where, you know, we have sun coming in, so we have dedicated one big area for gardening. And that's what we're gonna do. Edible gardens and according to horticulturists, it's actually feasible here in our climate year-round. That's also something new and I'm glad. So, that's, those are the, so number of plants, I kind of didn't remember the, the names of those plants. Many of them, you know, new, new to me in English. So, but I, I'm sure like 90, 95% of them are edible.
On page 53, actually. The report of your consultant, QEP Environmental, does go into some detail outlining the net ecological benefits. It's just I can't really understand what these phrases mean because it's Greek to me. That's all. But your explanation helped a lot. So, just a couple of other ancillary remarks that I had. I mean, in principle, from my perspective, a variance ought to be considered if there is a blatant defect in the bylaw or if there is a legitimate hardship case, right? To my way of thinking, those are the two grounds that would give rise to a variance being considered. Now, that being said, and knowing the peculiar aspects of this application, I'm inclined to think that with the stipulation that Sean added, yet I don't know that the planner embraced as much as I'd want to have it embraced, namely that in the actual recommendation, you stip that the terms, that the riparian area regulation assessment report would be adopted by the applicant and respected at all times. You know, I'd feel much better if that kind of teeth were in the resolution.
Any other comments? Questions? Dorothy?
One concern I have about approving this reduced setback is everything that's attendant to a garage. There's trucks, there's things that go on all around the garage. I guess I'm concerned about spreading the footprint of the garage to accommodate all the other machinery, things that scaffolding, ladders, all of that that gets leaned up against a garage is all around a garage. And I'm really concerned about the spread of that. So, a lot of the reason why we have the setbacks that we do is so that there's safety for that creek. That's my concern.
Well, that's the reason of building garages, like to, to put those things inside and make sure they're out of sight.
Question to the planners. Should this recommendation go forward? What? What guarantee is there that if sometime in the long-term future that it would stay as is with the changes that are made? What guarantee would there be, like, almost like a covenant on it? Could there be? I'm not suggesting there be a covenant on it, but I guess that's the terms I'm thinking. That if down the road, whenever, this property is sold, what happens to the riparian area? What happens if the next person comes along and either wants to go back further and all the natural areas that are, that are protecting the area are no longer? Can you help me with that question?
So, when we issue a development permit, that will be registered on title. When prospective buyers were to pull title from land titles office, it'll say this law is subject to development permits. Check with the city and it will specify that the development permit was issued. It had requirements for replanting, environmental monitoring and securities for that replanting.
Paul?
I, I don't want to open a can of worms here, but.
You're going to.
Through, through the chair to staff. How, what mechanism would you have for requiring replacements of dead plants? The, in my mind, the net ecological benefit that the applicant is, is demonstrating is a replanting plan. And they've put some effort into showing what that would cost and where the plants would be located and even what species they're proposing to plant, which is great. I mean, you know, to be spending close to $3,000 on, on replanting seems, seems great. I just happen to know that the vast majority of these will not survive the first growing season without a huge amount of care and input. They're very small container sizes that are being proposed and they're species that are just notoriously difficult to, to cultivate. So, I'm just, you know, I'm, I'm just thinking a year, a year ahead, knowing that the applicant is planting basically on gravel, that nothing's gonna be there a year from now. So, I, I'm just, I'm curious, I'm curious to know what mechanisms would be in place for ensuring survival or some kind of reasonable success.
Typical practice with the development permit is to take a security for the landscaping as well as to get a letter of assurance from the landscape contractor for the replacement of plant materials for one, two years.
And then, and then there would be an inspection after the two-year period by, by staff? Is that correct?
To obtain that security back, there is a report that comes from the biologist to confirm that it's all being done. Then the staff go to the site to confirm it's there, take some photos for records.
Perfect, thank you. Perfect, thank you.
Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, just through the chairs, just to follow up on that, because this is a process I'm not super familiar with. Um, everything gets planted, uh, you've got your assurance bond or deposit or whatever you wanna call it. And how long does the applicant or the biologist have to wait to say, okay, it's all done, fulfilled? Can they do that once they're done, right away and say, okay, it's all fulfilled? Or is there this timeline where we say, to say, okay, wait, you've gotta wait two years or three years or?
So they can, uh, do it right away to say that it's been done. We would still have the letter of assurance for security for, sorry, uh, replacements for plant materials over two years. Um, the biologist would also be subject to potential auditing by the province.
But they could, in theory, as soon as it's planted, say, we've planted it, you come take pictures, you look, say, yeah, it's planted, then they get their money back?
Correct.
Yeah, Jeff?
Uh, maybe it's redundant, but I just wanna make sure that everybody's catching what he's laying down. Um, the surety bond is posted for the dollar amount of the install. The landscape improvements get installed. Once inspected, the surety bond is refunded. The warranty bond on landscaped improvements is going to be one year, right? So if they die within that one-year period, the plants are gonna get replaced. If they die one year and a day out, everybody's at risk.
If I, if I may, through the chair, I, this is, in my mind, typical practice. It's, it's best practice, uh, for lack of a better term. Um, I, I am willing to, to endorse the application on, on that basis. I think staff are, have, have a reasonable approach to this and, um, and, uh, you know, I don't, I don't really see a problem with it. Um, I, I, you know, I, I will say that there's different qualities of planting plans and approaches to landscaping. Um, I would say this is, this is probably on the low end of the scale. Um, and, and I'm being, I'm being frank, but, uh, but, you know, that, that doesn't mean that there's, uh, that it should be denied, right? I think it still meets the, the intent of, of, uh, of what's been asked for. So, um, so, yeah, I'll be voting in favor of this. Thanks.
Yes.
To open up a can of worms, to use your expression. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, I think just a few short minutes ago, you said that the plant material, the species listed in this report are not hardy enough to survive. Um, so knowing your profession, I'm keen to learn your opinion on what plant material would have a way better chance of survival. And should the applicant consider that? Because that matters.
Yeah, I, I could suggest a, a number of species. I, I could also suggest, um, uh, a different type of, of plan. Uh, this is, this is a, essentially a planting plan that shows the distribution of species and it has no, uh, supporting documentation for things like soil amendments or irrigation or other things that go into sustaining plant material. So those are things that, that, quite frankly, are missing from the plan. However, given that there's a process for surety in place, uh, and verification, then it's really up to the applicant and their consultants to make sure that it survives. Otherwise, they're on the hook for replacing it. And I would think that that would be a disincentive to proposing something that doesn't work. So on the one hand, I think, I think that more rigor could be expected in this kind of an application. On the other, I think it's, in my opinion, uh, acceptable to endorse it because, uh, because it is following best practice. So hopefully that answers your question.
Richard, did you have something you wanna follow up on?
Uh, this my colleague just brought to my attention. Uh, through the development permit process, we could specify larger plants, if that's a concern.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think that would really make a difference at this point. Part of the problem is that they're, they're very unique species, so finding them in bigger sizes would be difficult. It would require changing, changing the plan and the approach. Um, so, um, yeah, and I'm not, you know, I'm just not prepared to reject this application on, on that basis.
Sean?
Is there, um, sorry, through the chair to planning again. Is there any precedent or any ability or leeway for you to, um, put time restrictions on a surety bond? Or do you have to basically say, if you've done the work and you can come back anytime to say that it's good? Or is there precedent for you to say, we're gonna hold on to the surety bond for a minimum of a year? And after that, then you can make your application to get it back?
I'm, I'm not aware of any precedent, no, I'd have to look into that. Um, I believe we have for one of our larger projects, a, a scaled approach, but it is a very large project as opposed to a small residential one.
Madam Chair, if I can respond to that. Typically, as we pointed out before, once they've confirmed that the planting has been done in accordance with the plans, uh, we are obliged to return the bond. We do typically require, as Richard's point out, that the, um, warranty that the plantings will survive, uh, typically for a two-year period. Beyond that, um, that's about our limit of what we can ensure. Um, and just to Paul's point, um, uh, and as Richard pointed out, there, there is a development permit that will go with us. And I take the comments from the commission members to heart in terms of there's an opportunity here for us to perhaps adjust that planting plan in different ways that will alleviate some of your concerns.
Great, thank you. All right, so we have a recommendation before us. And the recommendation is that, um, that development variance permit, DVP eighteen dash zero one-one, be authorized for issuance, which would have the effect of, and then the effect below and also the subject to. Do we have a member of the commission who would like to make a motion? One more question, all right?
I'm, I'm curious, if this isn't approved, what is your plan be? Like, what would be the difference in square footage of your addition?
The garage is, uh, it's just garage, basically, we kind of, uh, adding garage. No, unconditioned, no, you know, basically, I'm not adding any square foot to the house itself. Just garage only.
Mm-hmm.
Six hundred square feet, six fifty, or seven hundred square.
Richard?
Uh, I believe the question there was about what is the alternative if this isn't approved?
Yeah.
There is no alternative. The setback, the thirty-meter setback creates, the, um, the only option would be on the septic field. Uh, the, it does meet the rear side and front yard setbacks. This is an additional setback to the property bound, to property setbacks from the natural boundary called a creek, which eliminates the backyard as a buildable area, which includes the existing house.
Thank you.
And it's specifically for the garage?
So the, the thirty-meter setback applies to the existing building and all new structures. So it's a restriction on adding on to that existing building.
All right.
Thank you.
Yes?
I'm going to renew the staff recommendation. This, um, I want to go to add to the staff recommendation, further recommendation to council, that when council look at these, the riparian, um, setback bylaws, that council consider, um, putting covenants on affected properties. Because having a covenant affecting, section two nineteen covenant affecting title, so people can see it right when you purchase it, and that guarantees you enforceability over time. And we wouldn't be as concerned about what happens if this isn't maintained. If we've got a covenant saying this is how it's gotta be managed. And so I would, I would strongly recommend to council that we look at putting these sorts of things on, on title of our property, so we don't have to keep having this, this situation. But in terms of the, I think the act of this, and across all the Ts and across all the As in terms of due process and that, that the touch of going to all our neighbors and giving the lots of support is a really good way to do it. Uh, I would support the staff recommendation with additional information.
So your recommendation, you're making the motion that it be recommended to council and there be a further subject to regarding, uh, council looking at riparian bylaw, putting a covenant on the subject property, correct?
On, on any, um, not just the subject property, but just that they look at reviewing the riparian areas. So that any property that has a riparian, uh, area setback should be reviewed as to whether or not it's appropriate.
Okay. So not for this specific property, but to properties in general that are, okay. So that would not necessarily be part of this recommendation?
Well, you could say it for this property too.
Okay. Dennis, do you wanna make a comment?
Um, Madam Chair, um, I would suspect that that would be a rather onerous undertaking for staff. Um, there's a, Richard could probably jump in on this, but I, I would suspect this involves a considerable number of properties. Um, that would be, um, a fairly significant, uh, amount of staff time and cost to, um, put those covenants on all those properties. Um, on top of that, um, having to then contact each property individually and advise them and get their consent, um, it, it would be a major undertaking.
Okay. Back to the recommendation. So, um, would it be appropriate, or in keeping with what can be done, that council, that we recommend as subject to consideration being put on this particular, a covenant on this particular property in reference to the riparian area?
That could form part of the development variance permit recommendation. Uh, but do keep in mind that the development permit is also registered on title, which has these positive obligations.
Okay. All right. So, all right, so Sean?
So I guess I retract a little bit and say that, so I'm recommending the staff recommendation. I pretty recommend that council consider, seriously consider, um, looking at section two nineteen covenants for any upcoming, um, developments of land that would be affected by the riparian setback. So that means that, you know, if developers subdivide, then we can protect them from it.
My, my, my question, my point, my question with you would be, um, upcoming developments, but what about specifically with this development? The recommendation is really for this particular development. So I think looking at something for upcoming development takes us beyond what is on our table right now. That would be my interpretation. Yes, Jeff?
I might be wrong, but I'm hearing Commissioner Sean say that, um, he's in support of the staff recommendation.
Yes.
First and foremost. And I don't hear him saying that he's gonna condition his vote in favor of that recommendation. If, um, council gets on the bandwagon and starts registering two nineteen covenants against every property that's up against a riparian area. Rather, he's saying that I would strongly urge council to consider the use of two nineteen covenants in areas where a proposed development abuts a riparian area. So consider it a two-part process. The first part is saying the staff recommendation is one that Sean, I think, is endorsing. Secondly, and on the heels of that, strongly encourage council. This is forward-thinking, this is feedback to council for the ratification. The APC is suggesting that you get real serious about the legal mechanism of the two nineteen to enforce, um, compliance to development plans that could be injurious to a neighboring riparian area. Is that correct? Yeah?
Okay, all right. We have, did you, did you actually make a motion? Because we need a second.
He did.
You did, all right. All right.
He did.
We need a second, Eric.
And I'd like to second on.
Okay, Paul, we have a second, now we can continue with our discussion.
Excellent, thank you.
Um, I, I just wanted to, to clarify why I wanted to second. Uh, and, and it has to do with this application compared to potential future applications, which is what the second part of the, the, the motion is about. This application, in my mind, is, is relatively straightforward because the garage addition is happening in a, in a location where there really is very limited ecological benefit. So to have significant ecological, ecological improvement as a result of this application is not very difficult, right? It's a, basically a gravel pad that they're gonna be adding some plants to. So there, in my estimation, there's going to be net ecological benefit, even if only a few plants survive. Uh, so, uh, so, but if you compare that to future applications that might be really pushing the boundary, uh, where the garage is getting really close to the creek or they're taking out trees and vegetation and there's a requirement to, to replace that vegetation, uh, maybe a covenant is appropriate because then, as an owner is coming to purchase that property, they will, they will know right up front that there's an obligation as a steward of that land, um, and that creek environment, that they have an obligation to maintain it in, in its current form. So to me, that, that part of the covenant, yes, it's extra staff work, yes, it's an extra layer of, of protection. But, you know, there are other jurisdictions locally here that, that pursue that and, and I would argue to some good effect. So, uh, so thank you for, for suggesting that. Thanks.
Any other discussion? All right. So, hmm. I'm looking at this and we have a motion on the floor to recommend as subject to a constructed design and location, et cetera. And then we have a recommendation to strongly encourage council to look at bylaw two nineteen in reference to putting, or riparian, um, we need, I need some wording on here, uh, to, to, for upcoming riparian areas and putting covenants on it. I guess, I think that should be something, I think we should vote on the, the recommendation as it is presented here and then make another motion that would go directly to council. To me, uh, that's my point of view. I think it's a separate issue. Um, it's a, it is an important issue, but I think it's something that we as, as a commission can add in as a separate entity, rather than tie it directly to this particular, um, this particular item on the agenda. Discussion or questions? Comments? See where my, my, my problem is? Yes?
Yeah, and I appreciate both points of view, but I'm, again, going back to, uh, what Paul shared, um, which is the bigger picture administration of such applicants, um, or applications. And, um, and so I, I think, part of my enthusiasm around voting in favor of this is tied to, um, an expectation that council will take the recommendation of using section two nineteen covenants to legally enforce, um, how the development plan ought to be executed opposite riparian areas. Uh, and, and I see them as being not only related, but in this case necessarily linked. Not, however, suggesting that, that this motion, um, be subject to council embracing that. Rather, we're just simply recommending.
Entending, okay. All right, so with the amendment, would you like to reword your amendment, please, so that we can have it clear? Sean? Yep, riparian areas are relevant. Okay, all right. Well, we have, we have the amendment on the floor. Jeff is seconded? But you know, we're looking at the... We have to vote, yes. All right, do you approve the amended resolution? All right, now let's vote on the amended resolution. Recommending to council that the use of, of section 24 covenant where riparian areas are affected. 219, sorry, I wrote down 219. Where riparian areas are located. All those in favor? Contrary? Carried? All right, back to the original motion of the recommendation. All right, all right, so those in favor of the recommendation going forward? All right, anybody contrary? Passed, thank you. All right, good discussion. All right. We have no referrals, we have no delegations, and we are adjourned, provided we have a